February 15, 2022. I begin with roll call. Ms. Janie Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Oscar Medrano.
Present.
Mr. Rudy Corona.
Present.
Dr. Ariel Cruz.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez. Mr. Mario Silva.
Present.
Dr. Nate Carmen.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Weller.
Present.
And I'm here, we do have a quorum. We move on to item 1.2 on the agenda and 1.3, Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas Flags and the invocation.
Leading us in the pledge of allegiance is from Angela Lial Elementary, Federico Gamba Jr. Federico Gamba Jr. is a fifth grader at Angela Jerusa Lial Elementary. Federico is 11 years old and is the son of Federico Gamba Anidis Beth Viera. Federico's favorite subject is math. His accomplishments at Angela Lial Elementary include A Honorable, perfect attendance, and prioritizing good grades. Federico is known for being a very kind and enjoys making friends. His hobbies include constructing buildings out of Legos and playing challenging video games such as Minecraft. Leading us in the invocation from Angela Lial Elementary is Yocelyn Villarreal. Yocelyn Villarreal is a fifth grader at Angela Jerusa Lial Elementary. Yocelyn is 10 years old and is a daughter of Rejugio Villarreal and Alma Linda Garcia. Yocelyn enjoys playing basketball, dancing at the AGL Huapango Club, and reading, as is his favorite subject. Yocelyn always strives for excellence as an example through her accomplishments such as A.B. Honorable, perfect attendance, Whacambo Pluck Member, AGL Drumline Captain. Yocelyn plans on attending TSCC after graduating from San Benito High School. Everybody please rise for the national anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Good afternoon, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the students, staff, and faculty of San Benito CISD. And continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of the community. May we accept your responsibilities, act with courage, and uphold the education of tomorrow's leaders. We thank you, Lord God, for all your protection and help you that you protect our students and staff from COVID and all illness. We ask you these things in your name. Amen.
Will the parents please stand up and be recognized? And principal, Diana Hockes, thank you.
Federico and Yocelyn, if you'll step up here, we want to present you with a certificate and a little token of our appreciation. Board members, who don't want to step up? Great job. Angela, would you be here? You guys great job. Can I take a picture with you guys, okay, please? All right, thank you again. Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public comment. Before we begin, I will remind our audience members of the board's procedures for handling public comment. The public comment portion of our meeting is available to members of the public who wish to address any topic. Anyone who would like to speak during public comment must sign in prior to the start of the meeting and list the topics they want to discuss. Each public comment speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the board for each topic. If more than 10 speakers are signed up to speak on the same topic, all additional speakers on that item shall be limited to two minutes. However, any public testimony speaker who requires a translator will receive up to six minutes to address the board. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others during your opportunity to speak. Lastly, we ask that you do not discuss students who are not your own children. If a speaker is seeking board resolution of a specific complaint, that concern should be addressed through the district's grievance process. District policy DGBA has been established for addressing employee complaints. Policy FNG is the avenue for filing parent complaints. And policy GF addresses community member complaints. Grievance forms may be obtained at any campus administration office or at the district's central administration offices. Our first speaker is Ms. Rosalinda Garcia. Welcome, Ms. Garcia.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. My comment is regarding the expenditures made for food purchases and catering expenses specifically for administration meetings and staff events. The expenditures I reviewed were pulled directly from the expenditures for November and December. A school board member made a statement at last week's meeting inquiring with CFO if there are any areas which the district could cut on expenses. Her response made me shake my head with disbelief with her stating money is foreign to her. Saving money should be something all of us have on our minds. The district money is not a free ATM, nor should the district money be utilized to spend without accountability to the citizens of the community. Administration's restaurant ordering food expenses surely indicates that saving money is foreign to the amount of over $50,000 spent on just the month of December alone. The expenditures were for restaurant food ordering, tamales, pan dulce, Christmas party dinners at the island. The prior month, the same identified expenses were over $25,000 for administration meetings. That's over $75,000 in two months. Going back to a board member's question, if there can be cut on expenses, this spending on food for administrative meetings seems like a good place to start. Cutting back on administrators' Longhorn BBQ, Loubeys, Jason Delis, De La Stamales, when at this same timeframe, San Benito Food Service shows that our students were being served maybe peanut butter jelly sandwiches. Parents in the community deserve to know how our budget money is being spent and who is benefiting from it, administrators or students. I am not stating that a thank you to administrators is not warranted or well deserved because I expect a particular board member to twist my statement. But spending funds for restaurant food ordering in excess of $75,000 in two months in an area that I believe that trustees would want to be quite interested in. At last week's meeting, trustees voiced their concerns for the increase in tennis courts at Riverside. The increase of expenditures for the student's tennis court project was estimated over $160,000. You show genuine warranted concern for the tennis court project. So I'm sure this information will bring to you, for you to look into it a little further. I ask administration, why would you not utilize students enrolled in the culinary arts program to prepare meeting food instead of spending and spending on ordering on restaurant food? Why does the district promote a wellness program?
Sorry, your time is up. You had one item listed. I apologize for that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Good evening.
There are no more public comments at this time, so we move on to item 2.1 on the agenda, cash account report. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. I'll ask Mrs. Pettis to step up and present on this, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So for tonight's cash account report, we're going to look over January 2022. We'll start off with bank balances. Under our cash accounts, those are our first community accounts. We have $5,928,217.63. Under investments, our total investments, we have $79,256,161.9 for a total of $85,184,378.72. We're going to look at the comparison of revenues and expenditures to the budget, starting with the revenues. We are in January. We have five months left on this budget. So this is seven out of five months. And we should be about 60% of our spending and our revenues. So we have, under general fund, general operating funds, we have earned $58,830,312.14. Under our interest and sinking, our taxes, we have received $6,164,766.36 for a total of $64,995,078.50. And under capital projects, this month, we received $978 in interest. So our total capital projects revenue is $40,902,457.38. We'll go over the expenses now. Under general fund, we have spent $48,594,649.67, which is well below the revenues that we received. So we've spent 48, we've received 58,000. Those, again, will equalize throughout the month, the year. We won't get an April payment, so that's when you'll see it evening out. Under interest and sinking, we have spent $28,369,011. That one does not look correct. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, that's correct. It's because I'm thinking we made the payments this month, so I was expecting to see it there. But no, that'll show up on next month. We made about $6 million of payments. For a total of $48,623,018.78. And we have also spent $14,64,557.61 in our capital projects. Tax collections. So under, excuse me, my eye is starting to water here. Under our tax collections, we have received for this entire fiscal year, $13,445,939.16. 236 of that was from the last tax year. 12.6 million of that is for this tax year, starting in October. And we are at 78.6% compared to the 76.65 from last year. And next, we have our check register for January 2022. Yes, sir.
Mrs. Pettis, I'd like to interject real quick. In a minute here, you're going to go over the check disbursements, I think, right after this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Just want to alert the board. I know there have been some questions about the reports that have been received. When you might see a single line report that has an American Express charge and it has staples, but it has $380,000. No, we're not buying Gucci or anything in there. But in tonight's report, after you see that, it'll be highlighted. And on the next page, you'll see a breakout. So those bills, it might be for 25,000 or 30,000, it only shows the one line in that report. Run a skyward. Page behind, you'll have that detail. So just a heads up, it's in there. Thank you, ma'am. Sorry.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So I asked the secretary to pull anything that looks either over 25,000 American Express or has an odd description to the purchase. So if you see another one that you'd like a little bit more information on, please let me know. We'll make sure that those check registers go out like this moving forward. So on the check register, under general fund, we have spent $3,572,541.27. Under student activity, $29,457.98. Construction projects, $318,524.60. Under payroll, $6,326,46.36. And payroll liabilities, $1,759,237.20 for a total of $12,5,807.41. And as Dr. Carmen noted, you do have the checks in front of y'all. If there's any one specific one that I can try to answer a question on while I'm up here, I'll be more than happy to.
Any questions? Mrs. Pettis, thank you for your report.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pettis.
All right, moving on to consent agenda items. Under business and finance, item 3.1, request approval to accept gifts and bequests for the 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent. Item 3.2, request approval of budget amendments for 2021-2022 school year. Questions? Consent. Item 3.3, request approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito CISD and Texas State Technical College migrant academic achievement residential summer program, MARS. Question? Under administration, item 4.1, request approval of the memorandum of understanding between San Benito CISD and Workforce Solutions, Cameron. Questions? Consent. 4.2, request approval of district by design agreement between San Benito CISD and Capturing Kids' Hearts by Flippin' Group for the 2022-2023 school year. Questions? Consent. Item 4.3, request approval of the letter agreement between San Benito CISD and Texas A&amp;M Engineering Experiment Station. I'm going to ask that we move this to action agenda item. So if there's any objection to that? Okay, item 4.4, request approval of resolution authorizing employees related to emergency closure pursuant to policy DEA local. Questions? And item 4.5, request approval of board minutes. Question? Consent. Okay, so at this time, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.3, items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.5.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Janie Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, moving back to item 4.4, request approval of resolution authorizing employees related to emergency closure pursuant to policy DEA local. Ms. Lopez.
Yes, I just wanted the district to explain what this resolution was for, so the audience can know, public can know.
So we would revert that to Dr. Cruz. Is that correct, Dr. Carmen?
I can answer it. Dr. Cruz, you want to answer it?
I'm happy to, sir.
Sure. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
This resolution is in regards to January 20th and January 21st school closure. School was closed due to the resurgence of the COVID-19 virus. During those two days, an outside company came to disinfect all the areas in our school district. Our students will not have to make up those days. This resolution will allow our employees to get paid. It will also allow us to show support for our employees and encourage them for being dedicated to our students in our school district. It would allow for all of our district employees to not lose pay. It's applicable to those who worked for the district January 19, 2022 on. It would also allow for premium pay for those who did physically come into work during those days.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve item 4.3? Request, no, I'm sorry, item 4.4, request approval of resolution authorizing employees related to emergency closure pursuant to policy DEA local. So, second. I have a motion by Rudy Corona and a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, moving on to action agenda items. Mr. Weller, would it be okay for me to go ahead and start off with item 4.3 under this section?
Yes, sir, I would.
Okay, so item 4.3, being moved from the consent agenda. Basically, it's a request for the approval of the letter of agreement between San Benito CISD and Texas A&amp;M Engineering Experiment Station. And basically, I'd like to move that we approve this item pending revisions to the contract. They're still being worked on. And once it's done, we should be able to be okay with it. So my move that we approve it pending the revisions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have moved, and we have a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, action agenda item 5.1, discussion, consideration, and possible approval regarding purchases over 25,000. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. I'll ask Mrs. Pettis to go through these, please.
Yes, sir. We have A-Media. We originally had approved an A-Media purchase order that has already exceeded the $25,000 amount that we originally had. We have one for Dell Inc. for Bertha Cabaza Middle School for a total of $31,826. We have one for Frost National Bank. That is for our LED project payment that comes up in March for $269,748. Liberty Paper is also a purchase that we had originally approved, and we have exceeded the original amount that was approved. That one is for $31,500. Linebarger, Gogan Blair &amp; Sampson, that one is for $30,821. Parsons Roofing Maintenance for $38,876. Protech Mechanical for the Energy Management Department, that one is $73,737. Shai Government Solutions for the high school for $48,774. And the last one is for Weaver &amp; Tidwell, that is for an open PO for $150,000.
Okay, board members, do we have any questions?
I have a question. We have in our district our own media department, and we also have our students that can do media. We have ABC Consulting Company that does some of the media for you all. So what services will A-Media be providing that the other departments or companies that you all are contracting with cannot provide?
We have legal requirements that we need to advertise on our local papers, both Harlingen and San Benito. We have public notices, advertisements for bids. That way, we can get a good pool. A lot of that comes from A-Media. Dr. Carmen, did you want to add something on that one, sir?
No, I was just going to say, Ms. Gonzalez can add too. We need her to.
I'd like to add that it also covers our advertisements in the Brownsville Herald. Any special advertisements in the Valley Morning Star as well as the printing of The Observer?
Are you paying them to write the stories for you? Or what are they doing for you?
Who, A-Media? No, they just print in the Valley Morning Star Brownsville Herald.
Are they like inserts?
No, just the actual pages.
So basically, this is a group that we pay for all our, like if we go out for bids and we print it in the paper, that's what it is?
Yes.
Right?
They're print publications.
Okay, now you made reference to The Observer.
Yes, they are printed at the McCallan Monitor.
Okay.
And they are also part of A-Media.
So The Observer has nothing to do with ABC Consulting? They don't print that for us?
They don't print it. They set up the layout. And they send the file to A-Media.
Okay. Any other questions, board members?
Yes, so Aime and Liberty Paper are both open POs?
Correct.
And then Weaver &amp; Tidwell, they've already started working on the audit process?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is going to be an open PO up to what was approved previously?
We discussed $150,000 as an approximate amount, which is what the budget amendment was for from fund balance. And this will be an open PO for $150,000. Once we get to July 1, we'll have to do it all over again and do another open PO.
So are we already? So we're going to send, how do I, we're not sending them $150,000 right now?
No, ma'am. We are requesting that we do a PO for the $150,000. And then as they bill us, which we've already received two bills, then we pay them out.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions? We good? Okay, do I have a motion to approve purchases over 25,000?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar Medrano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Action agenda item 5.2, discussion, consideration, and possible action required under Texas Government Code 2254 for the district to provide a written statement and finding of the district's need for specialized contingent fee legal services for delinquent tax collection services. Dr. Carmen.
Yes, sir. Actually, I'll refer to Mrs. Pettis if she wants to address this. Or I think we have some gentleman here from Linebarger this evening as well.
Yes, sir. So this was the first part that we spoke with Monica Solis about last week, that we do have to make a notice of the need. And Mr. Moody, if you would mind, if we would not mind?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, administration, and public, general public. It's a pleasure to be here.
Gilberta, welcome.
Thank you. My name is John Gilberta. And what you have before you is a resolution that was passed, or the statute was passed by the 86th Legislature about a year, two and a half years ago. And it requires all contracts with contingency fee involvement with attorneys to go through this process. The district, the city, the county, they need to have a finding that they need these needs. They have these needs, and they can't do it in-house. So the title, you know, getting the title work done, the litigation, it would cost by the hour for you to expend that amount to collect the taxes. And so the reason that they did this is there were a lot of attorneys that were going to the entities, trying to get in to see if they could find mold or anything in litigation. And so what the legislature wanted to do is make sure that you had this need for this service first, and then you employ that individual. Because our fee is a contingency fee, but it's set by statute. It's not a 40%, you know, like other attorneys. It's set by statute. But because it's called a contingency fee, we're an unintended consequence of that bill. So you're just kind of going through the motion on this.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Since this is something to approve in action for a contract with Linebarger, Mr. Weller, was this something that you looked at? Is it something that you might need to look at? Or is it something that we can approve if we decide to as a board?
I've not been asked to look at it. It is accurate that Linebarger
It is accurate that Linebarger and a number of other types of law firms that do work that is roughly considered contingency work are subject to new requirements before a district can engage them. I know Linebarger is a very experienced tax collection firm. I would, I can only assume that whatever notices they're posting are sufficient and adequate. I could, I'd be happy to look at them if you'd like me to. I would expect they're fine, you know, but, but these are new requirements that came down from the legislature a number of years ago. They, they were intended to deal with true contingency fee attorneys. They kind of, as a byproduct, gathered and applied to different practice areas like, like bond attorneys who arguably work on contingency if the, if the bond matter passes or tax collection firms. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a little, it's, they're, they're nodding the i's and crossing the t's. I'd be happy to look at the notice, but I would assume it would be fine.
Sir, you can make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve pending the feedback from our attorney.
Okay, so we have a motion by, I, I want to restate the, the item. So we have a motion by Ms. Lopez to approve the written statement and finding of the district's need for specialized contingent fee legal services for delinquent tax collection as required under Texas Government Code 2254 pending the revision of legal counsel. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
We have a second by Mario Silva. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Next item is 5.3, which is the second part of this, discussion, consideration, and possible action to award a contract for delinquent tax collection services to Linebarger, Gogan, Blair &amp; Sampson LLP. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, and again I'll defer to Mrs. Pettis and the team here from Linebarger on this agreement.
This item is the second part and this is for the actual award of contract for the tax collection services for, from Linebarger, Gogan, Blair &amp; Sampson, sir.
Ms. Pettis, we've been in business with Linebarger for many, many years and so basically I understand that this is just a continuation, basically, and it basically, I don't want to say the wrong words, but like an extension of a contract, basically? Would that be correct or is a new contract?
This is a new contract, sir.
Okay. Any questions, Board members?
Mr. Weller?
I'm sorry, this would be for three years, right?
Three years.
Correct.
Mr. Weller, I just want to make sure this is not tied in with the previous one that we're asking you to look at, right? So we, we can make a motion to approve if we want to, it's not tied into the other one?
Well, it is tied in because the notice is, is part of the procedure for adopting the contract.
So we would, would we need to do the same thing as?
I would think it would be the same motion as the one you just adopted, that you just passed.
It would just be an additional motion.
And Mr. Weller, I have a follow-up question on that as well. Can you comment on the, the length of this contract? The contract is for three years, as Mr. Corona stated. Is that, is that something that we would encourage with any contract at this point?
You know, offhand, I'm not familiar with typically how long a tax collection contract goes for. I can look into that as part of the review. I'd be happy to do that, you know.
Any further questions?
What I'm always concerned about when having three-year contracts is, you know, what if, what if, and, you know, I hope it doesn't happen and I hope that our enrollment increases, but what if it does keep increasing or there's other factors that take place for us to lose funds? And that can cause a problem with us because we have a lot of contracts that have been approved or that the district asks us to approve and we approve. And they're three-year contracts or four-year contracts. So that's my only concern on having three-year contracts. So I make a motion again to approve this agenda item pending attorney feedback as well, review.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the floor by Janie Lopez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mario Silva, seconds. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Item 5.4, discussion, consideration, and possible approval of revisions to the 2021-2022 Compensation Plan. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, and I shall, I will ask Dr. Cruz to go over these two items here in the compensation plan, please.
Thank you, Dr. Carmen. The first revision is we are adding in Texas A&amp;M Engineering Experiment Station teacher stipend. This is for two high school teachers and it's contingent to the funding, contingent on funding. And it is aligned with item 4.3 that was approved pending revision. Second item up for consideration is the, an adjustment to the long-term assignments for guest teachers, those that are non-degreed and degreed, non-certified. I believe there was an interest in possibly increasing that to possibly maybe an additional $10. So the non-degreed amount is $90, that's the rate. For the degreed, it's 105. We don't have any adjustment for long-term assignments, which is 10 or more days in the same assignment. We have a great need for guest teachers right now, even though we continuously have our orientations. We're always looking for guest teachers. There's a shortage everywhere. So we'd like to, you know, encourage people to guest teach with us, substitute teach with us, as well as, you know, appreciate the substitute teachers that are working with us.
Okay, any questions, Board members? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revisions to the 2021-2022 Compensation Plan?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Oscar Medrano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rudy Corona. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Dr. Cruz. Next item on the agenda is a closed session. In accordance with Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act, the Board may move into closed session for the following reasons. Section 551.071, for the purpose of a private consultation with a Board's Attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. Section 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Section 551.082, certain school board deliberations. The time is 6:08. All right, the time is 8:21. We, we convene into open session to discuss matters considered in closed session. Item 7.3, employment resignations, retirements, and terminations. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, actually I think you want to ask for a, a motion from a Board member?
I move that we approve the employment resignations and retirements with the exception of the one employee as discussed in executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Lopez and a second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Two, one, two, three, four, five. All those opposed?
I want to vote yes, sir.
Okay, so 6-0 then, motion carries. Do we have another motion dealing with the employment resignation, retirement, and termination?
I move that we approve the one employee as discussed in executive session.
Okay, do I have a second?
So move.
Okay, we have Oscar Medrano and Rudy Corona. Okay, all those in favor? Raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed? One abstention. Is that correct? Ms. Lopez?
You can abstain from a vote.
You can abstain, Ms. Lopez?
If you just say.
Okay, so motion carries 5, 5, 4, 0 against and one abstention. Okay, item 7.4, hearing deliberation and possible action in case involving student discipline. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, recommendation is that the Board uphold the decision held at that campus, please.
Do I have a motion?
Moves.
Okay, we have a motion by Mario Silva.
Second.
Second by Oscar Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Item 7.5, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding proposed settlement pertaining to Mary Selia Longoria versus San Benito CISD. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, the recommendation is that you approve the proposed settlement pertaining to Mary Selia Longoria v, versus San Benito CISD.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Janie Lopez and a second by Oscar Medrano. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries 6-0. Item 7.6, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding Riverside Tennis Courts' sole stabilization change order request. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir, I think we're gonna ask our two Hellas representatives if they would come up to the podium, please. I think the Board may want to, to ask some questions regarding this.
Welcome back to our Board meeting. I'm, I'm sure you're aware there's been a lot of discussion on, on this, this change order request. And we applaud you guys for being able to negotiate. It's a, it, it was a, we went into deep discussion. We were in there battering back and forth whether or not to go with this and, and it's just, we, we hope that, basically, we know that, we know the type of work that Hellas Construction does and we're looking for some phenomenal tennis courts. But we hope that we don't have to go into negotiations as, as to any future change orders, if, if at all possible. You know, once again, we appreciate the negotiation, but, you know, going from one, one extreme to where we're at now, it was kind of discouraging. So, but we do thank you for, for what you all were able to, to work with us on.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you having us.
Any other statements, questions, Board members?
I, I did have a question, sir. As far as what you've already bid and, and the change, the one change order you've done, there's no guarantees you're not gonna introduce more change orders as you're doing the project. Because once you tear up the ground, there's possibilities that you're gonna do additional change orders.
Unless there's something in the ground that's completely, I don't know, like a gas line that happened to run through there or something like that, I don't appreciate it. Now, I did mention on the select bill that was found here recently locally. As long as that select bill also passes the, the requirements, which should be, they're not too stringent, but we do have to get that material tested and it does have to pass. So that's, that's what a lot of the, some of the savings down there in the local select bill. So I don't appreciate anything. I can't, I'm second, I'm very keen on anything.
So right now you brought up something interesting. You said the gas line.
Yeah, there you go.
So have you guys located the area to make sure that we have no obstruction, no fiber, no cables running through that area?
We will, we will locate that.
No, but I'm saying have you all had that done? Because if there is a possible gas line, whose bill is that gonna come on if it has to be moved?
Well, that would be, that would be on the owner, but the, we can't locate, we haven't given the notice to proceed on the job, so we can't.
Understood.
And actually get that done. But we will, we will locate, I don't appreciate that, that's an extreme example. I mean, I, it's something to do out there, out there right now, but that's just an example of worst case scenario.
Worst case scenario.
No, I don't appreciate that.
I want for Mr. Pettis. Mr. Pettis, do you know of any pipelines going through that?
Those are done this time. And if we have to work the gas lines, we'll work it internally. We have, we have anything we can do it, so okay, talk to us.
Mr. Pettis, you're saying that if there's gas lines, we would work those internally?
Yes, sir, we, we're able to do that for the school district. Our guy, we are going to.
You're able to move gas lines. If it's a major gas line, you're able to move?
With, with the gas company, I don't think we can, with us, with the gas company, we can just oversee it.
Are there any more?
I'm sorry? No, I under, I understand that. I'm just afraid of more revisions coming in to make up the difference of what the reduction has been. You know, because it, it's a huge amount and it was done pretty quick. So that's, that's been my only concern.
So do you all see, Mr. Pettis and you all, do you see any more issues coming up?
I don't.
No? Do you have anything else in that contract that we haven't, that you haven't included on the price? No? Okay, you know, going, going through this, this bid that you all gave us back in October and it's already four months later and the tennis courts are still not done for our students. And then you come on and you add this revision to the contract, which was double in price of what we have right now. You know, that's unacceptable for our district and for our students. It's just, you know, for you all to come and give that extra added cost. And I understand that, you know, there was issues with the soil, you gotta test it, you know, but at the same time, you know, us having to negotiate and spend time on this, you know, going back and forth and negotiating. I appreciate, you know, you bringing the, the cost down, but at the same time, you know, it should have just been given to us from the very beginning instead of giving us a price that was double. You know, I mean, we have to be very careful and be fiscally responsible with how we use our taxpayer money and ensure that we're not mismanaging our district money for our students because that, you know, additional amount that you came down on, that's money that we could have used for our students. And so, you know, that, and, and if the number had stayed like that, you know, double in price. And so, again, yes, we appreciate you negotiated, but, you know, it was not, it was inappropriate for us to receive such a high cost from the very beginning. We should have just received the correct costs, you know, the way it should have been.
Understood, and then we appreciate the, the local contacts, you know, sometimes not being locally, we don't have those contacts and I appreciate that, and we should have, that's definitely on us.
I'd just like to comment that I do appreciate that you reached out to some of our local companies and that's what was able to help us get that price more to, a more palatable price for us.
No, absolutely, again, like I said, I appreciate that, you know, that's money saved for you all in the future for us to get.
And I'm looking forward to that project being done for our students so they can benefit from it already. They've been waiting all year. So I'm sure the students are excited to know that it's almost coming to completion. How much longer is it gonna take you all?
So I'm hoping we can get started, by the way. I have, I should have some crews available. This is all kind of pending, as I went. I'll tell you where Melvin first called him and made this with my superintendent and see if I can get a crew out here by Monday.
What's usually the turnaround on something like that, on a project like that?
So for the doorwork, and I have to go back and look their schedule to be exact, but it should take about three weeks or so to get that removed, the soil and the dislodge fill-in. And then another two weeks to get this, two, three weeks again to get it ready for. And then it's gotta sit a month.
Oh, okay.
Here a month before we do with the service, which at that time we sit, we use that time to finish the fencing, get all the, be filled in and the service crew coming in. Once the service, service will take, it's working towards two weeks or so, so we'll do that.
About three, two and a half to three months?
Two and a half to three months.
Three months.
Given the weather permits also.
Yeah, weather permitting, if we have good weather, it could be on the lower end of that. We have a lot of work coming up, so I am gonna try to attack this as more as possible to just get a deal without making any promises. And I, that is my goal is. Get this job done, y'all get it all, you give your court suspension if that's possible, I can do those crews. Do what I have other than come down and start the project. That's my point, man.
Why has it taken so long? I mean, I've seen, you know, a local business that was built in a couple of months here and this, you're talking about a, you know, a drive-in business. What's it called, the one they just built?
McDonald's.
Sonic, there you go, Sonic. There is a Sonic that was done in a couple of months. And so I'm just wondering, because these are tennis courts and to me, in my mind, I'm not, I'm not a construction company. You know, it makes me wonder why it took, it took four months already and it's still not completed.
Well, to his defense, he doesn't have the contract yet.
Uh-huh.
Doesn't it?
Well, but this was something that was brought up to us recently, the, the change of order.
To get down, for example, to get down to the subgrade before we do all the stabilization, that'll take us, not much, very long. It'll take us maybe a week, we can have, I don't know what. But if we would have done that a couple of months ago, we would have been stopped before. Because we need, we need this involved easily. So the original plan wasn't to do, you know, we had time to get the tech removed, so we could have told us to do the two footers, plus the machine nationing.
So why did it take three months to actually test the soil or to get, to ask for a geotick?
So the geotick was, was asked for, well, just not right with the Board, but it takes a geotick, not engineering company. It takes them, you know, we got scheduled with them, it takes the time to drill holes. Then they drill holes, they have to run all the tests on the, on the hole or on the material that they're pre-sampled. They run all those tests and then they put it in the board. and then they go to the board. So from the time that the contract was awarded, the holes, I think it already, it was already scheduled prior to the contract. You just, we have to go and get it done. Once we got the report, that's when we put the price together, and obviously, that's the next story. We could have started earlier, but you just have a big hole out there, and us not even receiving the results yet, approving the approval for the machine.
Is this gonna affect the other buildings that you're working on, working on the, building the tennis courts? As far as the length of time, is it gonna interfere with anything? Or do you all have your employees, separate employees working on the tennis courts and separate working on the other buildings?
Right now, I should have, that's a call on the main. I should have a third crew available to start. We'll start making calls to get someone here as early as next week. Get it building yet. We can move it like three times. That's, that's kind of the point of it. I can get started now, because I can, I can tack it all out, have crews available, and get this crew figured out. But this, this job is hardly going to be done, so we're gonna tack it down as far as I can.
Any further questions? Okay, so if there are no further questions at this point, I'd like to go ahead and move that we accept the change order request regarding Riverside Tennis Courts Slow Stabilization as discussed in closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by myself, seconded by Janie Lopez. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Be safe.
Okay, there are no further items on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we have a motion by Oscar. Second? Second by Mario Silva. All those in favor, motion carries six zero. Meeting adjourned 8:35.